Call the City Council Work Sessions for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. City Administrator, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstad.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riappel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Fetter, Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Move on to number one, requests for liquor license at First Glance Events. I'll give it to Mr. Murphy first. I know Heather, you're here. Tom, if you want to come up, sit up there. Mark, want to make sure your mic's on there, please?
Yes. This one is fairly straightforward. We've been contacted by Ms. Bruton, owner of First Glance Events. She'd like to be able to offer liquor as part of services when she has clients there. And I think she's been working with some of the catering businesses here in town, but its schedule has not always been the best. So with that, she is here before the council to inquire about getting a liquor license. So I'll turn that.
Hello, how's everyone today?
Good.
My name is Heather. I am the owner of First Glance Event Design. One, I am a designer. I've been in the industry about 30 years. And two, this would be my sort of like first venue that I actually own and operate. I'm really excited about being able to offer liquor because, one, coming out of the South, we always put our liquor in our trunk. No liquor was sold on Sundays, you know? So it was kind of like a scary thing. Once I moved here and I saw it's okay to drink, it's okay to have a beer, you know, those things are okay. So now I'm looking forward to being able to offer alcohol. One of the major things, I'm not really competitive in the market that I'm in, not being able to serve alcohol. I get about 15 to 20 calls a day just for my venue to book. But when it gets to the question, do you offer alcohol? Can we offer alcohol? The answer is no. So then it's, well, we'll give you a call back. And I never hear back. And that's weekly. I get the same thing over and over. Do you have alcohol? Can you offer alcohol? So that's one of the things I want to be able to offer. I love East Grand Forks. That's the reason why I put my business and I chose East Grand Forks. After about two years of just researching, where could I put my venue? I'm just, I do want to upgrade. I do want to move to another level. I do want to offer some things that I see on the East Coast that I would like to offer, which is one is called Ha Ha Brew Night, which is where you can bring your pet. Because we have another section to the building that I plan, if I am granted the liquor license, where you can bring your pet. I feel terrible going home and I can't take Pobby out with me to have a drink if I so choose to. I've seen these, because I've already left him all day. And yes, I give my husband credit. He's a retired military. But when I have to leave back out, take him out to party, then I leave him again. I just feel, I don't know, it bothers me just a little bit. So I researched and I saw that on the East Coast, they offer pet bars, where you can take your pets, you may can have a drink or a beer, but they also have a space to where the animals can jump or just interact and play. So I thought that would be something nice and different to bring to East Grand Forks. Because I believe in keeping the revenue where you live, you know? Sometimes I don't always like to have to come across the bridge when I'm in East Grand Forks to go get something to eat, or shop, or even though I live in Grand Forks, I love East Grand. And I believe a lot of our revenue should stay on this side of the bridge. But I love both cities. So I'm looking to offer that to my clients that call me on the phone. Because before the pandemic, I would go design at local hotels, 100 to 400 people. After the pandemic, I'm now down to maybe 75 to 100 people. So I'm kind of hurting there a lot. But if I can offer events in my venue, that would kind of squeeze in the gap. I withstood the pandemic and I thank my husband for that. He went into detailing cars. He got an ozone machine to where he could detail cars and stay open and do paint and paint correction to where he could get cars. That's what kept us open, because of course I was shut down. Nothing happened for me. So I'm just really trying to recover. I'm not going to make it, to be honest with you. I'm not going to make it the rest of the year if something doesn't change for me. And to be able to offer that to clients that, I live in an area to where, for me, it was my first time ever seeing liquor at baby showers, functions. I never knew it existed to go to functions and there was a bar, you know? I was shocked. But that's what happens. That's what, that's the area that I live in. And I want to cater to the area in which I live in.
So there, currently, we do have, we're able to have seven liquor licenses here in the city where it's not tied to a restaurant. Currently, we have two, so we do have five open. So there are some.
Any other questions for Dale?
I have just one, thank you. When you're talking the liquor at your venues, are you talking, you're not talking having this right at your own site? Do you hold deals there? Or are you talking when you go out into the?
No, at my, at my venue. Because I do operate a venue. I'm licensed for 162 for the first portion of the building. If the person wants the whole building to host events, or if I'm hosting something, I'm licensed for like 250.
Okay.
So I'm thinking for my, just my venue.
Okay.
Because I don't.
That was kind of my question. I didn't know how many people you could handle or whatever.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for east side, do important businesses, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's my only question.
Any else have any questions? Mr. Demers?
Just a clarification, this is an on sale liquor license. So this would be just like any other bar, restaurant. This isn't a catering.
Nope, this would be an on sale liquor license.
Yep. Fine. Thanks.
Any else have anything?
I'm glad you stopped in. You know, we've driven by there 100 times and didn't know. Now we have a person to associate with that business and glad you're here.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Any else have anything?
I don't think so.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you all so much. Hope to see you with the paws and the brew.
So we'll be in contact with you for finishing that up. We'll get in contact with you for finishing out the license paperwork and getting that submitted.
All right. Thank you.
Move on to number two, requests for pedestrian crossing. Monsieur Foltz?
It's Monsieur Mike Foltz, pastor and superintendent at Sacred Heart. Thank you for having us. This is Joe Zarro. Each parish has two trustees, and Joe is one of our trustees. So basically, we just want to know what the plans are for Third Street and with the railroad. Now, we received this email this afternoon. They had forwarded to me. So they're not interested in any pedestrian traffic.
Yep, that's what they're indicating, yep.
So if, if you could just share with us what this would look like? Because it would impact our parking a lot. Because across the railroad tracks on school days and when we have a funeral, everyone parks over in the.
Trailhead.
Trailhead. And then where the GFG building, our parking lot there. And then if they were to park there, they'd have to walk quite a ways to get across.
Emory, you want to go over it then?
Yeah, so, you know, what's basically being proposed is Third Street Northwest would be closed off, you know, with turbine wires. So there would be no at grade railroad crossing there anymore for vehicular or pedestrian traffic. So really, the nearest intersection where the railroad will allow, you know, even pedestrian crossings of the railroad tracks is at Central Avenue. So, I mean, you are correct. I mean, it's not going to be as convenient for people that are going to want, you know, use that parking lot, or, you know, vehicles that might park right on Hill Street or whatever.
Avenue we got there?
Undnamed Road.
Huh?
The unnamed road.
Yeah, the unnamed road.
Yeah, right now, it's a, it's a two way.
Right.
Right now. And I guess the decision would have to be made, you know, do we have parking on there, create a one way? You know, do we just remove parking from that road all, you know, and then keep two way traffic too?
I guess that doesn't have to be determined yet at this point. But I guess, but if you could clarify, I'm not sure if, I haven't really had a chance to talk to you about this, but it sounds like there's been some confusion or about the fencing that would be going along, along there for, you know, that would help prevent pedestrian traffic. And that could, are you able to kind of talk about where that fence would start and stop and what the plan is?
You know, that fencing would basically go from essentially like the flood wall, the railroad flood wall closure there. So there would be a fence that from there all the way over to Central Avenue.
How many feet from the railroad?
It would probably have to be, I mean, they haven't gave us a specific distance, but it's going to have to be, it's probably going to have to be especially right along that road between the, you know, the school and the railroad property. I'm thinking right there, it's going to have to be pretty close up to the back curb there.
Do you know?
What's that?
Why'd you put it on the property line?
Well, I think that road is actually technically on railroad property.
Oh, you're talking about on the other side of Central. I was talking about from the, you said the flood wall to Central, or flood wall to.
Yeah, all the way.
You're saying.
It's going all the way there.
Yeah.
You're saying.
Yes.
So Steve, do you know, is that planned for both sides of the tracks?
I believe right now it is, yeah.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So in all the preliminary drafts of this, there was a pedestrian crossing at that. I mean, it specifically was a switchback fence that should, I remember, I mean, we sat here and talked about it and how it would work. And you had to walk one way and then walk the other way. And then you could see the trains going both ways. So at what point did that get eliminated?
I don't think in any of our proposals, there's ever been a pedestrian crossing there.
So I'm.
They are going to still require at.
I haven't been sitting at these meetings for four years and just.
At Central and at Second, they are going to require some type of gate closure there or a pedestrian, right, maze. But as far as I remember, Mark, I don't think we've ever had just a pedestrian crossing at Third.
There could have been if it was fully gated originally when it was done. It was when, when we had the gates on both sides. So Third would have remained open.
But once, once we, once they stated that they would only give us the quiet zone if we closed one of the intersections, once that was closed, then that turn, that gate, pedestrian closure goes away. So.
And who is the final decider? Is it, is it BNSF? Or is it Federal Rail? Or?
BNSF.
And then I want to, just as exactly this, what's the, who like watches this? Or what's the clawback if there isn't, if horns still are blasting and stuff like that? What's the, what's the mechanism going forward? That might be something someone needs to answer at another time. But, you know, who's the oversight on whether or not the deal is being enforced?
Well, once all the improvements have been made, once Third Street, let's say, has been closed, the city will have to file, it's called like a notice of establishment with the, with the railroad. And that's basically then, that's kind of what'll trigger them to stop blowing their horns or whatever.
Right. But they guarantee you in the contractor, in their documents, it'll say, well, we reserve the right to blow our horns whenever we want anyway. So what's, for doing this, what guarantee are we getting that that's going to happen?
Well, I guess, and I don't have it here right in front of me here, but we do have a draft agreement with, that we would, we sign with the railroad for the quiet zone. And there would be provisions, I don't know off the top of my head what the provisions are for that, if they, you know, what the ramifications would be if they don't abide by it. That I guess I don't know. But, but the parameters of that quiet zone and what we agreed to should be in that, in that agreement. But I guess off the top of my head, I don't know what, what the provisions are and the ramifications if they don't abide by it. I assume we'd have to sue them.
Right. Okay. And like I said, I didn't want to digress too much. It's just something that popped in my head as I was going through this. I'm like, whoa. As we think about this, it seems like, you know, obviously, nothing happens that's all 100% good or all 100% bad. And we're trying to manage those, you know, the positives with the negatives. But it seems like, I mean, I've been a proponent of trying to do this quiet zone for a while. I disagree that that wasn't part of the deal. But, but there are some giving up, right? And how do we mitigate that giving up? You know, is there, are there engineering, you know, do, do we have that mind of an engineer and can we fix and mitigate those issues? Or is it just going to be, we're giving it up to, does BNSF, does this one person at BNSF have the full control to make this decision? Or is this, are we done?
I guess I can attempt to address that. No, they're, I forget the name of it, but they do have, Alex, Mr. Fiore, he does have a supervisor that we, we could, you know, bring this to. But I know that they, they've been pretty adamant about it throughout the time that they would want to close that. And as far as one of, one of the things that, for the trade offs on that, for when, when they wanted a closing of the street out there, so the provision that we got back from them is that they were, they were willing to pay for, pay for the closing. You know, and then we were able to work with MINDOT as well to pay for some of the, some of the rest of the cost there too. But as far as the, Mr. Fiore, yeah, we could appeal it. I can be, my experience with the railroad is, is that they are as closest thing to a dictator as, as we can see, you know, here between their 100 foot right of way out there. And that goes way back, I think, when it was all being. But my experience is here in some other cities, it's, even the NPCA doesn't tell them what goes on in their 100 foot right of way. So, I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but I would say it would be extremely difficult to get them to change their position.
And then how did you come about that, that Third Street was the closure that you guys wanted to close instead of perhaps Central? Is there?
The biggest thing was, you know, with the configuration of the street, well, basically kind of Hill Street on the south side, and then the street between the tracks and the school, kind of the configuration of those streets. If we were to keep that intersection open, Federal Railroad Burlington Northern was going to require basically a four quadrant gate system, which runs probably on the order of a million dollars to put in. So it was basically their recommendation to close Third Street. So the recommendation really came from the railroad.
And it was because of the way, how, how it's set up there with that curve and, what is it, on, across the street there? Yeah, Hill, Hill or whatever it is. How that curves along there and it was so close to the right of way, they wanted it. They figured it was the hardest one to do that. So they want, the other ones have more stacking. So for example, like this one, if the gates come down and that, there's, there's really no spot for stacking on the, I'll call it the south side. Is what the pushback we got from that.
Well, we stack there now, right?
They do, but not.
I mean, how would it be any different right now?
Not, not the stacking that they like to see where it's stacked up where you could see it.
And the, the crossing at Central is now designed for a, a median, right? It's not a four way.
Or quadrant system, you mean?
Quadrant, yes.
Nope. It's just, it would be the, the gates that are there right now. And then just on the north and the south side, we'd have to install a median. So essentially, traffic couldn't try to sneak around those gates, you know? And that's the problem with, you know, we got it Third Street is when that gate comes down, you know, but just how close those streets are to the road, you could very easily, you know, sneak in behind those gates. And then there's just no room to put in medians or anything in there either.
Well, you could go to a quadrant system, and then you don't need a median.
Do what now?
They could have went to a quadrant system, and then you don't need a median.
You could. And we still can go a quadrant system. But, you know, unfortunately, that system probably costs almost a million dollars. And, you know, again, as an incentive to closing that crossing, you know, Burlington Northern is giving the city some monetary figure to close that, close that roadway down.
So speaking of the median now on Central, on the north side, is that going to prohibit people from taking a left?
Nope. It's only on the north side, it's about a 30 foot median.
Okay.
So if you measure from about the gate.
Yeah.
About 30 feet. So, yeah, no, it won't prohibit.
So now all the traffic that typically uses Third Street will go up to Central and take a left and go west on.
Correct.
On that hill road or hills.
Yep, yep.
Is there, you know, if the issue is parking and access, you know, depending on where that fence goes, and I'm particularly looking from the flood wall to where currently Third goes, currently, there's parking there. It's city property. Is there something, an agreement that could be worked out that would allow the school, the church to have access to that, maybe? My fear is, okay, as you go through, like, there's going to be fence there, you're not going to be able to access it off of Third? Is there a way that they can have access off of, off of, what is that, Second to the west? Or headed from the west and allow parking still there? And if, or could, could that be something that would be turned over and we could, since that isn't going to be a, a street really there, could it be additional parking? Or, you know, could the city, I mean?
Yeah, I don't know.
This area, the, the parking area from the dyke to Third, basically.
This whole area here.
The city property that.
Is that city property?
Is that city?
That's all city property.
You're talking right across from here, current parking lot they have there now?
Yeah, where people, I mean, people are parking there right now. I'm just wondering if there's a way that that could be developed to make it more efficient parking, have access off of the, off of the road.
Isn't that road still going to be open?
It will, but.
That road will still be open, yeah.
But if the, if the, if there's a fence now that goes right through where the access is off of Third, Third Street, right? Now, you're not going to be able to get there. I'm imagining.
You're just asking the city, Mark, is if additional parking could be put in along the.
Yeah, it'd only be to here because of the levees right there.
Right.
Are you talking for additional parking?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, part of the problem, right, is we have people that are going to events, to church, to all these things, that are parking on the other side of the river, or on the other side of the railroad. Is there a way that the city could work with them to either give them the land, do, or work with them to develop the land, give them, make sure that they have access off of the actual street? Because the fence may take up the access that the railroad fence is going to take, and allow some additional parking there. I don't know how many spots you're going to get. But, I mean, there's probably, in the trailhead, there's probably, what, 20 spots there? There's probably 15, 20 along Hill. You know, that, so you're, we're trying to access 30 some parking spots.
Yeah, it's the plan of the area where the old water tower used to be.
Well, as you know, we've been growing, Sacred Heart's been growing, and, and parking is a premium around there. And that was, that was the reason why we purchased that water tower, was to have a spot for some employees to park. We're still working out the kinks on trying to get a lot in there. But even, even adding that lot doesn't, doesn't take up what, what we're using right now on the other side of the street, or other side of the tracks. So, I mean.
And like I said, this thing doesn't really give you, I mean, there's already people that park in this spot. I'm just wondering if you could, if 15 cars are there now, is there a way you could fit 25 in there? You know, if you paved it and put bump curbs and, you know, lined it or something like that? I don't know how many you could get in there.
You know, Mark and Joe, I'm a little uncomfortable about this, the parking at the trailhead here is city property, right? Public parking? And it seems like the conversation is going towards, we would owe something back to Sacred Heart to develop this parking that you're not really losing. It's public parking anyway. So.
No, yeah, you're totally right. It is public parking. And, and the people that use our facility have every, have, you know, they could park further north, they could park in the Cabela's lot. But this is the, this is the best spot, and it's the most, the easiest spot that's available to them. And we're just, you know, we're just concerned that by, that this development is going to hinder the activity at our, at our facility.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. I mean, it is a hindrance. I was parked there this weekend for the basketball tournament.
Right, yeah.
I totally get what you're talking about. But I'm still caught up a little bit on the fact that it's city property and the.
It is city property, but if you close a road or you close something, I would imagine our attorney could, would maybe advise us a bit, a bit about it, but it could be considered a taking. If, I mean.
And it's not just.
We're not taking any.
No, it's not just in the trailhead lot itself. It's along. The Third Street. Is that Third Street down there? Yeah. I mean, if you go tonight to the basketball game, people will park all the way out to Central on Third Street. You know, so, I mean, we're using all the streets available to us to use, to use the facility. We're, we're parking everywhere we can. And, and just, our, our main concern is that, that, that's the entrance to, to the auditorium and the gymnasium that are used quite often. And if there's, if the pedestrian access that we were, understood was going to be in part of this, is, is not part of it, then it, we're, we're just here as concerned citizens. Like, what's going on? Like, like, and when, where's the change?
Yeah. Every step of the way for this project, we've wanted to work closely with Sacred Heart. As it's turned out, you know, if you're looking at a map of Sacred Heart to the trailhead, to the Ball Diamonds, your football field, the, the baseball diamonds, I understand that's all city property, but you guys have really improved it, you know, with all the neat stuff that's in there. And whosoever property it is, it acts like one solid venue, all the way to the Ball Diamonds, all the way to the church, and everything in between. And that's turned out to be a really nice feature to our community that a lot of people enjoy. And so that's why through this whole thing, we've been in a conversation with you guys, you know, how do we preserve that, even as hopefully we benefit the kids, you know, not having the train whistles when they're out in the playground and stuff? I mean, it's, it's trying to find that, that balance of, of everything. Now, if somewhere along the way, if this turns into be more of an impediment to Sacred Heart than maybe a benefit, I would even consider walking it all the way back and saying, maybe we don't even do it, right? Somewhere along the way, we may come to say, if it really doesn't work well for Sacred Heart, that, you know what? This project doesn't go forward. I would just want to register that that is my viewpoint. This is not some heavy handed act by us to, to push it on you all. This should be a mutually beneficial project. And, and again, what we've set up here, and how well you've maintained that, that's the other thing. It's a beautiful part of our greenway that we haven't had to do much with. And it's available for the kids to play and whatnot. So this should, this will be a cooperative effort. And if somewhere along the way, you say, the way this is setting up, this is no longer at all a benefit, it's a big detriment to us, to what we're doing here recreationally with our, our church and our programs, I'd, I'd support, you know, having that, that tough conversation back to BN and saying, this may not go forward, right? This has to be good for everybody surrounding this. This may not go forward. That's my view.
Thank you. One thing you're kind of forgetting in that there, Mr. Mayor, is the residents in that area. They're the ones that suffer a lot. They're the ones that lose a lot of sleep there too, because of train horns.
Yep.
And they're the ones that really brought this to the table to start with.
There's a, there's a woman at Hugo's who reminds me pretty often.
Yeah.
How she's looking forward to a quiet zone.
We have to think of that. We have to remember that.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
But the other question I would have, what would be the chances of putting a parking lot on? But the other question I would have, what would be the chances of putting a parking lot on the west end of that G F G lot that you guys already own? I mean, that wouldn't be really that much further to walk than what you're doing right now. You already own the G F G property, so why why would not put a parking lot on the west end of that? You could put a lot of cars in there. If you can get the construction people out of there with all their dirt and everything for a while. It seems like they pile dirt there a lot, but I mean, that would be a be a good parking spot, you you know, I just it's just a thought, but my thought that, I don't know, I'm I'm sure you guys have thought of that too, what you'd do there, but.
Mr. Rieffel.
I think we need to control what we can. In this case here, a lot of the stuff is out of our control. I look at what Grand Fork Central does for parking. They're two, three, four blocks away. This is nothing compared to where where they have to park to get to school. I've got two granddaughters going there and I know they park three blocks away just to walk to school. Well, I know we all used to walk uphill both ways to go to school, but two, three blocks is not a big deal. I think I think we have to look at. I go to church at Sacred Heart and I do not like that train whistle at the ten thirty mess. At ten thirty in the morning.
Especially when he interrupts my homily.
Right, well, the babies do that, but but uh, yeah, we uh, I'd rather see it go through. I know if we delay it any longer, we could be one year, two year, three year out. I don't know what the timeline is, but they might just throw their hands up and say, to heck with East Grant Forks and not do it.
I mean, at this point, um, you know, there's minimum requirements for median lengths and all this other safety stuff that we have to do. And even at Central Avenue with the median on the north side there, because the minimum medium length is a hundred feet. So like on the north side of Central, we can't meet that, you know, keep that left turn.
Yeah, right.
So long story short, we have a application down to Federal Railroad that's been down there for about a year now. Um, and it's my understanding that we're getting close to finally getting final approval on that. But, you know, even if Federal Railroad came back and said, yeah, we can maybe do this, I think we'd have to reapply to Federal Railroad. And I think that's going to start the whole time clock over again too, you know, so it's would be a major process to to start over. And and again, based on our email that we did receive today from Burlington Northern, I think it's going to be a real uphill battle to get a pedestrian crossing.
Is there any other avenue that we could go down and not offend the individual who already gave the response to see if we could get it? It doesn't maybe have to even be in the original spot as proposed. Could they support a pedestrian crossing anywhere in there that would connect those two? There's is there any any?
I don't I don't think it's so much a location. They just said that, you know, there's data showing that pedestrian crossings in a quiet zone, um, you know, are very dangerous or whatever. So they just, what they've said is they just won't recommend just strictly a pedestrian crossing.
So is there pedestrian crossings at Central and Second?
There is at those, yes. Yep.
On both sides or one side?
What's that?
Are they on both sides or one side?
One side. Kind of on the west, what I'd call the west side of Central and the west side of Second. Mr. Murphy.
You know, um, and Mr. Foltz and I had spoke a little bit about this here today as well. I mean, you you parking in the in the downtown area, I I think we have a maybe a slightly better situation than they do across the river in Grand Forks. I know they have the the parking ramps there and and that, um, but they have their own issues with the parking ramps. But parking in in really all of downtown East Grant Forks is is an issue. We've got that big lot out there, you know, and we have events and stuff. It it gets full. Um, you know, so we've, I mean, I think as the council is well aware, we've looked at that solutions to parking for a long time and particularly, you know, maintaining it, you know, when, because, you know, we don't really have the funds set aside yet for when when things do have to be replaced and refurbished. So that means we really don't have the funds for building new parking lots either. So with that being said, though, I know Mr. Foltz and I did speak a little bit about that, you know, there there is um the city parking lot um on the north end of that block, um, kind of across from the VFW um there. I know which typically, from what I've seen, is when the when the Sacred Heart Church needs the parking, it's not always at the same time that the rest of the downtown maybe is filled, like with the VFW and stuff like you. Your funerals are at different times and that, you know, I mean, if you have a really big sporting event, it maybe could be conflicting. But, you know, I guess what I was trying to say is that I I I think we would be more than willing to try to work with Sacred Heart, you know, as far as maybe directing access or or making it known that those parking lots are available, that they are public parking lots. Um, and I know we did speak as well a little bit about um for when when the construction does start for the for closing Third Street as well to um try to get the notice out there as much as possible that, you know, we are closing this for the quiet zone and, you know, that that through street will end, you know, so people get a little bit more used think about ta- taking alternative routes and how they're going to get there rather than from where they normally have gone. Um, I think people are aware of it, but I don't know that they really think it's going to be a reality here quite as soon as it really will, probably will be. So just wanted to characterize a little bit about Mr. Foltz and I had spoken about earlier. Hopefully I did that.
Yep.
If I summarize it correctly.
Does anyone have anything? So.
I mean, to go, I'm sorry, to go back to what was said earlier, to that space kind of south of the current Sacred Heart parking lot between there and the trailhead to the north of the tracks. If there's a way to create some parking in there, if that helps out your cause, um, that would be that would be a good move. Um, I mean, really, we can say that it's a church, but it's thousands of people. It's it's it's, you know, it's a ministry. It's a whole in a in a school and a lot of things. So this isn't like one little entity that we're looking out for. This is a whole bunch of our people that that care about this.
Does everybody's on the same page? You're talking about parcel number eighty three point zero 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 sixty nine point zero one.
Boy, that's a multiple.
Right?
Yep, I don't know. I just see it on this.
Yeah, it's also it's in our package numbered like that. You're on the map, right? Google Maps?
Oh, yeah. Do we know where the railroad right away would extend into that parcel?
I would imagine at their property line.
Probably that gray line there.
Mm hmm.
Boy, I printed my.
It's colored. So, I mean, right now, we're where are we at then? I mean, are we going to go back and talk to somebody, see if it's even a chance to glimmer of hope, just to make sure?
Well, yeah, I mean, we certainly.
Verify has been verified that we.
We certainly we certainly can. I do know that some of the provisions that they they do have, um, some of the options that they have had for pedestrian crossings in the in the past maybe aren't so much available anymore. I know they've been trying to get away from them, but they do have provisions for them for pedestrian crossings. Like they said, you know, they they had that kind of like that maze thing and then with the gates and stuff like that. So but so the question would be, you know, we we certainly can do that and and we can we certainly can push for that. If we would get them to agree to it, it would, what I I from my from what I do know and our just throughout the this the conversations we've had throughout this whole process is that it would be um you know, they would they want some sort of barrier. I mean, they'd they'd want something like where, you know, if the train's coming, you know, they it would like close off that barrier to that. So what I'm saying is that that would not be a probably inexpensive fix.
What, and this is maybe thinking a little bit outside the box, and there definitely be a cost to it, but what about a grade separated bridge, you know, a ramp? I mean, you have, you're going to with the closure of the street on both sides, you're going to have plenty of runway. You could have a long ramp, long ramp, short bridge over. I mean, what's the height regulation for something? I mean, it'd be a fifty foot bridge or s- I mean, steel bridge or something like that or.
He looked at at an up and over or or under that Thirteenth and it was crazy how much it was. You know, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Making them media compliant is the 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 cost.
So I guess, yeah, so with so with that being said, I mean, we we certainly can, but i- if we would do that when pushing forward on that, we if they would allow that, we it probably wouldn't be good if we if we went there and pushed and asked them for that and then we said, it's too expensive. We can't afford it. We're not going to do it anyway. So, I mean, we we probably want to talk about the cost, you know, and who maybe would potentially be paying the cost. Would that be a city expense? Would the church kick in on that? I mean, I think that's something we would probably want to find out before we would really push it that hard. I'm just.
Unless we pushed and said it's it's somewhat cost dependent, right? You'd say that right up front. We need to know if this can happen and it's going to depend also on the cost factor. Of course, they'll jack up the cost then. But, I mean, if you want to be very forthright, you could just tell them. You know, on our end, part of the consideration will be, is it permissible and at what cost?
Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I'm uh curious about finding solutions for the parking crunch during events, you know, on the other side of the tracks. If if there's an event tonight or maybe Sunday, when when everything is loaded up like you described, do you think someone could do kind of a quick traffic count for the number of cars that are on the on the wrong side of the tracks?
Yeah, there's a game tonight. You should, everybody should drive by there tonight.
Take take some pictures if you don't mind and email them.
Yeah, take a look.
That'd be great.
I'll just cruise through there and that'll just kind of help me to kind of understand, okay, it's ninety cars. And then you start to look at that lot David mentioned and where else can we find spots for for event parking? Which, you know, we want to have convenient event parking so we continue to have events. And I think that regardless of who's having.
Great thing for that. That's, I mean.
Love the fish fry.
I've seen them parking on the grass, what we're talking about. I'm one of them.
And and realistically, about fifteen spots in our lot are taken up pretty regularly by the apartment buildings down, you know, down the street. So that's in which we've been good neighbors about, you know, like we understand there's not a ton of street parking and we offer parking along there. But if you drive by in the middle of the night, there's still cars there, you know? So that's also something to think about.
Yeah, well, I'll drive through. I'm just curious, you know, where else could these cars go? You know, without saying, go go put a million dollars into a parking lot, you know, what do we have right now in existing facilities that can help offset? Yeah. Most of it at least.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll do that.
So if it gets down to where BNSF says, no, we're not we're not going to allow you to do it. Um, and the stance from Sacred Heart is, do you not just want to go forward at all anymore? I mean, I guess that's where it gets down to.
I wouldn't say that. We we want a quiet zone as well. We want traffic flow and we're good neighbors to because we're all in this together. So I think we just keep dialoguing and see if we run into a dead end, we'd run into a dead end.
Right, yeah.
If we run into a dictator.
At the at the time, we also asked for some uh, for, I don't know, a legal look up of what the, if there was any agreements on that south bypass road or I don't know what you want to call it, the the road that's on BNSF property that's on the south side of Sacred Heart. Um, I know we've asked about it through this process a few times about what's the status of that? What can be done with it? Can it be, you know, can it be reconfigured? Can it be, what happens if BNSF says we don't want that street anymore and takes a bulldozer to it and rips it up? Like, what, we should know what that agreement is or what it is.
And we can we can look up if I if I recall correctly, I believe I believe there's an easement over that, that the railroad had granted. Yeah.
And Punky would have some insights too. He was close by all that.
But it doesn't matter what people remember or remembers what's on the paper.
He'll maybe direct us.
Yeah, but I I do I do think we looked at if I do think we looked up, I I think there I think there is there, I believe that we did see that there actually is a recorded easement, but we'll we'll confirm that.
And if there is a an easement for a city, the city could make it a one way upon request if they wanted to or reconfigure parking or something like that.
Yep, we could, yep.
Does Sacred Heart own that street? Don't they own that street there?
Just BNSF does.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry. You go. I uh, when would this come up for council vote? We're just delaying, delaying.
Well, as far as for the the quiet zone, the the council has voted on that. It would the next step in the process will be, um, if I correct me wrong, is um, looks like we will be getting some of the funding here with the BNSF or we'll be getting the we'll be doing the bids for the for the construction of the project. And then once we do that, we submit the those bills, when we once we pay those receipts, we then we get reimbursement from BNSF and MnDOT. Um, so to be correct, I believe we were kind of looking at sometime maybe closer towards fall to start with some of the construction.
Yeah, depending on timing, I mean, we could technically, we could do the city. We could do the work that we need to do as early as this summer. BNSF does have to upgrade their signal system at Central Avenue. Um, I think right now that's in their twenty twenty three step or whatever, um, which their fiscal year starts on July first of twenty twenty two, so David did kind of try to push them to see if they could get their signal system upgrades completed yet this fall so that we potentially could. If we had our stuff done too, we could establish the quiet zone, you know, as early as late fall. Um, if the railroad can't come through, get their upgrades completed. Um, you know, then the quiet zone wouldn't be able to go into effect until, you know, sometime in twenty twenty three, but.
I would say if late fall would be a terrible idea to try to implement something. I mean, you've already established patterns. If it can't be done by the first of August, I don't think you should do it because you're going to have to have you're going to have, if you think it's unsafe right now, crossing things with people running around with their heads cut off, trying to figure out what's going on.
I guess the only reason I pushed for for that is be trying to get it earlier in their fiscal year rather than later is just because we we do get regular inquiries about when is the quiet zone going to go into effect. I mean, I know it's it's something that is, Mr. Councilmember Helm said, it is something that the neighborhood is very interested in.
We do need to do our work. The railroad needs to do their signal system upgrades and all of that before it could ever go into effect, so. I think best case would be this summer, this fall. That would be best case. Joseph Elser.
Just, yeah, one thing. Um, if it turns out that a lot of pedestrians will want to come from, let's say, the Sacred Heart corner and traveling to the southwest under the railroad bridge to get over to Ball Fields and stuff, then maybe we should consider, I mean, just don't take any action, but, you know, maybe extending their rec trail uh, parallel the tracks on the north side of the tracks. Um, extending the rec trail down to connect with the rec trail down here. And then they could loop over and and get over into these things. So that would just be for somewhere down the way. If this happens, if you have the fence running all the way up to the flood wall, then you may want to extend that rec trail down if the if the students and athletes are going to be coming down through there, you'd want to have some easy way for them to get down there.
Anybody else have anything?
Appreciate your timing and consideration, but.
Right, entertain a motion to adjourn. Lloyd Johnson.
You're welcome.
Seven second. Second by Al, Al for RCI.
Hi.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.
Like on this side? What's going to happen is people are just going to climb over here and then cross right here.